Good evening. Jerry Stahl, Chatham. I'm going to try -- I was here last week when a couple of you were not. So I'm just going to try to quickly summarize what I presented last week, and then end with the suggestion that may remove what seemed to present a problem for some of the select board that was here last week. So I'll keep that till the end as a surprise for you to wrap up tonight's exciting meeting. So FAA, at the airport, FAA design standards specify that for safety reasons, an airport should meet design criteria appropriate for its so-called "critical aircraft." This is defined as the most demanding aircraft type which makes regular use of the airport, defined as equal to or greater than 500 operations a year. The problem that we have is that for the past four years, the number of operations for Airport Design Group II has been substantially over 500 each year, namely 575, 625, 532, and 638 respectively in the past four years, according to data from FlightAware and from the FAA. So the airport meets the design requirements for Design Group I aircraft, but not for Design Group II aircraft like the Pilatus. Design Group II aircraft are larger, defined as wingspans over 49 feet. They're generally turboprops and jets rather than propeller planes. They require more stringent airport design features for safety. The Chatham Airport management has done nothing about this problem. Moreover, it does not even appear possible for the Chatham Airport to meet the design safety requirements for Design Group II aircraft. So the airport just continues to put its neighbors, us, in harm's way. At last week's hearing on the citizen's petition, the AC Chair Harrison admitted that the AC has in fact not even contacted the FAA about the fact that the Chatham Airport has exceeded the FAA limit of more than 500 Design Group II operations per year. In his recent statement in today's packet, Michael Thompson stated that he met with the FAA recently, and they did not even know that the Chatham Airport had exceeded the 500 operation annual limit of Design Group II planes. However, when Mr. Thompson analyzed data he obtained directly from the FAA, it showed that the 500 operation limit has indeed been substantially exceeded in each of the last four years. He reported this to the FAA, but they have apparently not acted on it either. AC Chair Harrison also stated last week that the airport has not encouraged charter flights. However, the website of the Chatham Municipal Airport, which I believe Chair Harrison designed, advertises several charter companies with flight service to CQX. In addition, AC meetings have discussed how the AC, the Airport Commission, could support charter flights by arranging for lodging and/or ground transportation for charter pilots. So airport plans continue to push for measures to encourage charter use of the airport despite the impossibility of meeting the required safety design. This is not in the interest of Chatham residents. Instead, requiring ADG, Design Group II charter flights to use Hyannis Airport with its control tower and its longer runways is much safer for pilots, passengers, and Chatham residents. The AC, the FAA, and even Chatham's own select board have refused for years to put limits on expansion of services for the Design Group II charter flights. The proposed bylaw, unlike current plans and policies, would indeed maintain the character of Chatham as a small airport that primarily serves recreational pilots while improving safety and security for residents and aviators alike, a goal that I think many citizens would approve. This is a compromise solution. We're not asking to shut down the airport. This is a compromise to the airport increasingly impacting the surrounding community without concern for the safety and well-being of residents. So I'd like to end by addressing a concern that select board members raised at last week's hearing. The petitions signed by many citizens only included the proposed bylaw wording restricting the types of planes that can use the airport. However, select board members raised concern about potential legal costs required by other clauses of the citizen's petition. So I took a closer look during the past week at the wording of the complete warrant article. I saw the clause that I assumed they objected to. If this clause is the concern to the select board, I have no objection in removing it from the proposed article. It was not part of what petitioners signed. If it's too late to change it for the warrant, I would accept its removal as a friendly amendment at town meeting. And it's this sentence. "The town manager shall direct the town council or other attorney on behalf of the town to engage in civil proceedings, including but not limited to actions seeking declaratory relief. To vindicate the validity and enforceability of this bylaw in the event that any government official or agency should make a determination that it is not valid or enforceable or disapproved the same." I hope the select board members will support this amended bylaw, which would increase safety and align airport operations with FAA safety regulations and with the desires of many Chatham residents. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna -- I see that the Airport Commission Chair, I believe, is online. But before I offer him an opportunity to comment, does anybody on the board have a question or a comment? Go ahead, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments regarding what Mr. Stahl just said, just to make sure everyone understands. He said that once the operations exceed 500, that the aircraft of that particular category, the requirements become mandatory when that threshold is met, which exceeds 500 annually. And my comment there is that they do not become mandatory. ADG I aircraft, that aircraft type, was identified as the most demanding aircraft utilizing the airport at the time the master plan was drafted. Most demanding means in excess of 500 operations per year. I agree with that. This does not preclude aircraft that are larger than ADG I from utilizing the airport. There's no mandatory issue at all. This simply means, from a design perspective, the FAA will expend funds at Chatham, but only to satisfy the needs of ADG I-type aircraft. So it does not preclude the ADG Type II aircraft from using the airport. Another thing, he says, and I did say, and I admit, that last week, the Airport Commission has not contacted the FAA about our operations. That's true, because I had forgotten that the airport manager does it on a yearly basis. He turns it in, and I had forgotten that. But the Airport Commission has never done it. So in a sense, I was right and correct when I said, no, we have not reported it. But the airport manager does. Another thing, by the way, I did not design the CQX website. So that, I had nothing to do with that. And the page that has the charter companies on it is buried deep into the, on the website. You have to really know where to look for it. So I don't think you could call that encouraging. We have never encouraged that. And I said that last week also. So basically, with regard to this whole warrant article, I'm staying with the legal assessments, and I believe my commission would back me up on this. I'm staying with the legal assessments we have from our council and that of the town. The proposed bylaw is simply not legal. Also, the commission's consultants have refuted Dr. Thompson's technical statements many, many times over the years. So again, it's just the same old, same old. There was a warrant article similar to this a couple of years ago, I think it was 2022, that was defeated. Again, it's just same old fear mongering and misinformation. Thank you.
Comments from the public?
Evening, members. Jan Burke, West Chatham. I rise to, I hope you will not recommend this article. And the first and most obvious reason, but I'm gonna leave this to maybe town council and others, is the obvious illegality of the article based on the federal preemption of the federal aviation regulations entirely control what types of aircraft and how they operate at a public airport. It is well beyond the scope of the town to be getting into the details of what category airports, how many operations, and so forth. But that's not primarily what I want to comment on. I have a different perspective in this. I've been in the land use and zoning business for a long time. And I get, as a resident here, I'm concerned about a technique that's being used here and the problematic nature of this bylaw. This bylaw, if it goes, well, it will go to town meeting, but if it goes to town meeting, is highly problematic in so many ways. I could spend all night here telling you the defects in this bylaw. Right from the very start, you've got citizen's petition who signed just a small paragraph, and now we have an article that has all this additional enforcement language after it. Whether or not that's appropriate to go forward or is actually part of the article is not clear. It says to see if the town will amend by adding the bylaw that reads, and then it puts it in quotes. And then the quotes end, and all of the enforcement information after that is added, not in quotes. The other thing about this bylaw is, it starts right. The very first problem is its draftsmanship, right from the very beginning. It talks about amending a bylaw. We don't have bylaws. We have two flavors of bylaws. We have protective zoning bylaws, and we have general bylaws. Which one's this? Well, I think we have to, you know, if it quacks like a duck test, take a look at it. And this one quacks like a duck. It's a zoning bylaw. A zoning bylaw is one defined by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 1, "Any bylaw that purports to regulate the use of land." This one couldn't be clearer. It starts out by identifying a very specific piece of land, the Chatham Municipal Airport. And then it goes on to describe a use that's not permitted. We have lots of prohibited uses in our zoning bylaw. So what's happening here is the practice that I'm offended by, and that is the disguising of zoning bylaws as general bylaws in order to avoid the legitimate zoning process for adopting a bylaw that must go through the referral to the planning board, statutory hearing, hearing by the finance committee and recommendations to town meeting, and the required type of vote at town meeting. You all know that, you know, zoning bylaws are adopted on a different basis than a general bylaw. There's also, this bylaw is so replete with drafting problems and mechanical problems, it's hard to even begin to talk about this. First, the part that we're not sure is even part of this bylaw says that it's going to be enforced by the town manager or his or her designee, police officers, and other officers or individuals employed by the town designated to prosecute violations of the bylaws. Does this mean the people who are authorized to give out parking tickets can come and enforce this? Are we now going to have our town manager, who I'm sure has nothing better to do, to go over to the airport with a tape measure and scales and figure out how big planes are, how much they weigh? Or are we going to have her hire somebody to do it? Is the police chief, who's already run out of here, and I can understand why, going to be next in line to do that? I mean, this is the craziest thing I have seen in 52 years of looking at bylaws. And then it goes on to say that we're going to make the district court impose this $300 fine. Only a state legislature can decide what the fines are in a district court, not here. But then it goes on to say that in addition to that penalty, the town manager shall direct, not may, shall direct town council or other attorneys. So I guess if town council says no, you get to hire somebody else. To enforce this and initiate all kinds of civil remedies, equitable remedies, and seek conjunctive relief, I mean, this is just a lawyer's dream. The amount of litigation that can come out of this could be just amazing. Now that is if it goes forward as a general bylaw. If it goes, here's another problem. If it does go forward as a zoning bylaw, the enforcement provisions of this are directly in conflict with Chapter 48 that says a zoning bylaw can only be enforced by the building commissioner of the town. And now you've built in a conflicting problem here, even more litigation. And finally, if the Attorney General's office tells us that this is illegal, then the town manager, or they were just talking about this provision, or is directed to have the town council or another attorney go ahead and appeal this decision because it's been determined to be invalid or unenforceable. The cost and the unintended consequences out of a bylaw like this are unbelievable. This is certainly not ready for primetime, for lots of different reasons, and these are just some of them. I don't think I've seen anything more convoluted in a long, long time coming before a town meeting. You know, when citizen petitions come into town meeting, even though they don't have to go to planning board and places like that, anytime you bring a citizen's petition for a zoning article, it is absolutely best practice to be talking to your town planner and your planning board before you bring the article, whether they're going to support it or whether they're even going to sponsor it or not. That didn't happen here. There's been absolutely no dialogue with the town in preparing this thing. This thing is a mess and shouldn't see the light of day, frankly. So I hope you will vote to not recommend this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs.
I object to being ambushed like this. I have no idea who that was or what she's talking about. I did not bring this forward as a petition because of legal points that she cares about. There's a problem with the airport. The problem goes on and on every year, gets worse because there are more planes, of those big planes, coming in each year. I'm trying to do something about it, not because I have all the expertise that she wants from me, but because no one else is doing it. Why isn't the town council taking care of it? Why isn't the AC chairman taking care of it? Why isn't the select board taking care of it? I told you at the end of my talk today, I don't care about the legal clauses. I'm willing to throw them out. I care about the problem at the airport. And it is a problem, and Huntley may belittle each point. I could argue with him for hours, because I know what he's talking about, because he's been making the same claims over and over. But to get ambushed like this is, I'm sorry. I thought this was a place a citizen could come and raise an issue that's of concern to a large part of the population and that makes all my neighbors nervous many times a day as these big planes, you know, shake our houses, especially in the summer, when we're outside and have friends and like to enjoy the peace of Chatham, which is why we moved here. But, you know, I see I made a mistake spending my time preparing for this because, you know, you're happy to see somebody like this come in and just tear it to pieces, you know? Obviously, I can't defend myself against, you know, I'm not a lawyer. I can't, I have no idea what she even is attacking, you know? So, good night.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes, thank you. I think Mr. Stahl had said prior to the previous speaker, the attorney, that he was willing to take out the penalties and amend it on the floor. So I'm really shocked at the venom that I'm hearing here about something where the people bringing it forward are citizens who live in the neighborhood and are concerned. And once again, Chairman Harrison referred to these people as fear mongering. You know, this discourse has really shocked me. I would urge Chairman Harrison to actually read the airport manager's contract. He is allowed and has been doing advertising charters of large planes to come into the airport that exceed the 49-foot wingspan. He has the ability to rent cars. You have to understand what's happening is the fees to land in Hyannis are very high. So what's happening is planes are coming into Chatham. They're not staying in Chatham. They are not generating us revenue. They are landing, they are renting cars, they are driving to and staying in other parts of the Cape. Now, you know, I just think we have to get a little more civil here about something where these people are afraid that a large plane on takeoff and landing could crash. We have seen in the news over the last months that the FAA is not doing their job. They need a lot of work. Mr. Harrison has said that he hasn't met with the FAA. The airport manager does. Well, what good is that? The airport manager isn't here, and he's the one that's setting up all the contracts. So I think everybody's got to cool down a little bit and say, you know, these are citizens who have a legitimate concern. We've seen the results if a plane crashes on landing or takeoff, and they're large planes, and their solution is to simply limit the size of aircraft coming in or taking off. And I really don't get this venom. This is not fear mongering. These people have a concern. And everything else is passing through. You know, all these other citizen petitions, no problem. Everybody's great with it. What is it about the airport that everybody's so defensive? It's going to stay the same. It's our airport, but it's in a highly densely populated neighborhood. And they are trying to do something to mitigate the possibility of an accident. And I don't get it. They cannot afford the lawyers that the town of Chatham has been able to afford with the 13 pages of arguments. You know, there is a tremendous inequity here when private citizens are just trying to bring something forward and allow the residents to vote on it. I don't live near the airport. I'm not going to get killed if a plane crashes. But I think they have legitimate concerns. And all this legal ease is absurd. You know, he's already said he's going to amend it on the floor and take out all the penalties, and I think that's why it was defeated last time. So I would hope everybody cools down a little bit and takes it on face value. And again, I would suggest all of you read the contract and the latitude that the airport manager has for signing contracts and advertising to bring in larger planes and more frequently. And he has the right to renew the contract as soon as it expires. It's a terrible contract, in my view. It gives him way too much authority over the airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay, do you want to comment on, well, anything that you've heard, but specifically the need for legal input into decisions of this nature?
So let me, there's something that I was hearing tonight that kind of concerned me, and that is with respect to some of the language that is on what I viewed as a cover memo to the bylaw. And the, I think there's a misconception as to what should be on the warrant and what shouldn't be, should the select board determine that it's going on the warrant. And that is that the petitions themselves, the signature sheets, contain the small italicized portion that is going on the warrant. That is all that can go on the warrant, because that's all that's on the signature sheets. That cover sheet that has that additional language, which includes the stuff about compelling town council to enforce or sue in the event that the bylaw isn't approved, which would be an illegal use of town council, by the way, that is not before, or should not be on the warrant. It is oddly structured. The italicized portion is referenced as the bylaw, and that other language struck me as just some language that maybe the applicant would hope for in terms of implementation, but it's not part of the proposed bylaw and shouldn't be on the warrant because it's not on the signature pages that people are petitioning. So that is all that can be on the warrant, is those pages that are, the language on those pages. Aside from that, you have my opinion, which is a little bit more brief and focused on Massachusetts law, and you have counsel for the Airport Commission's opinion, which is a little more complex and rooted in some of the state and federal requirements in and around governance. I've given an opinion that this proposed bylaw is not legal and that it's preempted by state law, much in the same way that other efforts at regulating through bylaws aeronautical operations are preempted. There is a body of law, which, some of which is cited in the supporting memorandum offered by representatives of the petitioners that talk about the legal reach of a town to regulate airport concerns. But those are more binary issues where a town may, as a matter of zoning, and this is not proposed as a zoning bylaw, but where can you prohibit airports from being on a certain portion of town land without regulating the actual operations on those airports? And the answer to that is yes, but that's not what's going on here. What's going on here is reaching into airport operations of an existing and regulated by state and federal authorities airport and trying to regulate what type of planes can or should be made available or be allowed to access that airport. And in my view, having done this a few times with the Attorney General on similar issues, that's going to be ruled likely as preempted by the state government. I view it as preempted. Certainly, the Attorney General would have the, as would the Mass DOT, have the last word on that. But I see it as like very, very low odds that it will pass muster because of the general preemption issues, some of which I kind of highlight from a prior decision of just a couple of years ago in the town of Rehoboth, which tried to regulate helipad operations. And it's made a little bit more complicated by the fact that this is a commercial airport rather than a private airport. So I think preemption applies even further in these instances. But, so I saw it as fairly straightforward. I know that Mina Macarius, the airport council, took a bigger view on some other issues. I know him. He's an excellent attorney. He's an excellent attorney, and I do not question his credentials or his opinion on that. I think they speak for themselves, so.
Thank you, thank you. Jerry, do you want to?
I'd like to respond to one of the points the town council just made, which all I really intended was that one paragraph in italics, the wording of the bylaw. I think if I read anything last week to you, it was just that paragraph. And that's what I submitted when I submitted the petitions, was just that paragraph. And then somebody from the town staff contacted me and said, can I send in the whole warrant or something? And I had a page with all of those other clauses that looked like a warrant page someone had given me. And so, I sent that into the town. But that wasn't something, like he said, that wasn't part of what we circulated among our neighbors to get signed. And if, based on what town council just said, if you can consider the citizen's petition to just be that one paragraph which states about certain planes not being allowed to land at certain places, that would be perfect solution for me.
Yeah, and I think that's what will be considered, both because Jay said what he said and because of what the petition says. But yeah, Dean, go ahead.
Go ahead, Dean, and I'll comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to take some of the responsibility for the conversation about the paragraph that Mr. Stahl earlier offered to delete because I was the one that raised it, was it last week? And I was looking at the longer document that has the italicized word and the various other language, and I thought that there might be an issue under the charter, and it sounds like the town council agreed with that. And I appreciate your attempting to respond to that by that offer. And as the chair said, what goes before town meeting is what's in the italics because that's on the signature sheets, and I had really not paid enough attention to that last week. And I also want to say, the previous speaker, first time I've ever heard that speaker, I just made the connection, we got an email from that speaker earlier today, and we read that, and then much of the same argument was made on that. So, I don't have anything more to say about that. I do want to say, so what does that leave us as a board? And I, by the way, I've read and reread the town council opinion and the opinion of the airport council, who was basically special counsel to the town. And I've read, Dr. Thompson sent along a document, I think yesterday or today, and I read that, and we received a while back, a legal opinion from an attorney named Mujo. I read that when it came in, and I read a very long document that Mr. Fulton sent in today. So, I've read all of that stuff. And as I said last week, I'm not an aviation attorney. I kind of, I've had a hunch that there was a preemption issue here because we dealt with the issue of preemption when we were involved in litigation of skydiving. And so, I remember that. I remember the Roma case came down from, I think that's an appeals court case, when that skydiving issue was pending. And I know we had some occasion to look at that at the time. But with respect to the italicized words and just focusing on that, we've got an opinion from our town council who raises a legal concern about that.
I understand that. I'm not a lawyer. I don't even know what the word presumption means.
Preemption?
Preemption. I don't know what, I have no idea what that means.
In general, it means that when either the federal government or...
And I don't care what that means. In my opinion, I have no concern about the legal issues. If it's illegal, I understand that the Attorney General of Massachusetts will end everything. If it passes town council, it goes to that person. And that's their job to determine if it's legal or not, in my opinion. And I'm willing to go with that.
That's fine.
I'd like to see this will go to town council. I hope it passes, and then it's up to the Attorney General. It's not up to me.
I appreciate what you're saying. All I'm saying is, the reason I pay attention to what he says is because our job is to vote on whether to recommend this or not. It's going to town meeting.
I understand.
Okay? So, you know, I'm a lawyer if our town council tells me, whether I'm a lawyer or not, that this calls for adoption of a bylaw that doesn't have legal status, in his opinion, I have to pay attention to that. So, that's where I'm coming down. As far as the broader question, because I was the one that asked the question of you last week and of Huntley Harrison, has anybody talked to the FAA? And no one has. And you indicated that there was an expectation some, a while back, from a member of the select board, that that sort of discussion might take place, but it never really happened. I would be very supportive of that. I just want to say that as an aside. So, anyway, I just...
I would just like to say, I'm hoping that some of the members of the select board will support this, not because it's legal or not legal or has this clause or whatever, but because they're supporting the citizens of Chatham who are concerned about this problem with the airport.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mr. Stahl. I will not be able to recommend, based on the fact that it is illegal, and I have to do what's legal. There is an issue. I understand the passion of the folks that signed the petition and your passion as well, but this is not the mechanism to solve that issue. But we shouldn't shove the issue aside, and I don't have a magic wand to wave to solve it. I don't. I've been around a while, a long while, and airports been an issue for quite a while. We went through it with skydiving, as select board member Nick Castro mentioned, and it was pretty nasty. I strongly feel this bylaw suggestion, this petition, is not the mechanism to push forward, but there may be others. So, let's see where we go. I think talking to the FAA is a good idea. Again, you know, I seek redress, if you will, to try to assist our townsfolk, but we have these, very much as Tim Roper used to say, we have these golden handcuffs from the FAA and with state and federal law as well. And we need to abide by state and federal law as a select board and certainly me as a select board member. Thank you. Those are my comments. I will vote against it. Thanks.
Corey? I'll make my comment very brief. No, I appreciate your coming forth, you know, standing, you know, you're not alone, you're physically alone, maybe. But I recognize there's a lot of other citizens who share this concern, have concerns, have had concerns for years. Mechanically, you know, I'm not going to support this, but I will give you the fact that I am very sympathetic and supportive of having a dialogue of how to address what is appropriate for the Chatham airport and some of the other size-designed, you know, planes that are out there may be more appropriate for the Hyannis Airport 15 miles away from here and how we, from a regional perspective, can create a better situation for our region and our neighborhoods, that there may be some kind of mechanics to get there. And I'm welcome to have that conversation. This unfortunately doesn't do it, but I do think you're putting into light, which many of us will recognize, that there is a concern, and it's not just one or two individuals. It is a larger group of citizens that have a legitimate concern out there.
Jerry, I just want to say, and I'm sympathetic to your frustration. I really am. I may not be addressing it to your satisfaction. I know I'm not. But I want to say that, in fairness, this whole, this time around, this issue was introduced, at least so far as the select board is concerned, back in December, early December, when it was a many, many page, I don't remember how many pages it was, but including exhibits, it was 20-plus pages of legalese from a gentleman named Mujo addressed to the select board. And it basically said a bylaw like this, or this very bylaw, was legal, and it addressed all of the issues that had been addressed back in 2022 by an opinion from Anderson Krieger, the airport council. Ever since that original submission, there has been back and forth on the legalities of this bylaw. And we have two opinions, one from town council, one from Anderson Krieger, the airport commission's council, that have opined on that subject. Now, again, it may be, I don't happen to believe it, but it may be that they're wrong. They're our council, they're the people that we have retained, we believe that they're competent, they have a good reputation, we rely on them. But I also want to say about what Ms. Burke had to say, and town council may actually disagree with me. I am a retired lawyer. I do my best to avoid talking as a lawyer here, but I do want to say that what she had to say is a point of view with respect to the issue of whether this is a protective bylaw, i.e. a zoning bylaw or a general bylaw. I believe that what she said is the more persuasive side of that argument, that it is a zoning bylaw. And Mr. Talaman may disagree with me, but I just want to say, that is a question that I raised just as an inquiry. Have you thought about it with a member of your group? It's more than a month ago, five weeks ago. And purely, I'm not saying, you know, there's anything wrong with the bylaw because of that. I said, you should consider that. That was at a time when it was possible to proceed as if it were a zoning bylaw and take that issue out of the picture. Now, I appreciate your frustration with all the legalities, but, you know, we're in a territory here where you have to, you really do have to follow the legal map as to how you get from A to B. And for that reason, I think that I can't support the, I can't recommend this bylaw, but I appreciate your concerns and your efforts, and I just can't support it.
Move to place, I mean, move to recommend, sorry.
I would just like to...
Please, go ahead.
...respond to Corey because he was this sympathetic voice on the select board. I'm not the, I may physically be the only person standing at the microphone, but if you recall, before COVID hit us, we had meetings with the airport commission where there were literally hundreds of citizens who were as passionate as I am about doing something about the airport. How long ago was that? Four, five years at this point? Since then, the number of charter flights have increased. It was below 500 back then. Since then, every year, they're increasing. And who's doing anything about it? Why didn't somebody who has a lawyer background sit down with me and work out a better wording for that, you know? Or why didn't the select board propose a bylaw that was legally pristine? You know? Why do you wait for me to do a citizen's petition? Citizen's petition's done when no one else is doing it. We have the town, we have the select board, we have a million committees out there who are supposed to be doing, taking care of these things, making sure that there's not going to be a big airplane crash on top of our house or whatever, in your new roundabouts. That would be great in the middle of August, right? When they're clogged with cars to have one of those airplanes come down? You know, you want to be responsible for that just because of a legality that you don't like the wording or the punctuation in my bylaw? You know, I'm not trained to do this. You guys are the professionals, but you're not doing anything. You haven't done it for five years. Hundreds of people came out. They've all given up. There's only three of us left who are willing to even come out to a select board meeting to hear a discussion of this. All the rest of the people, it's not that they love the airport now, they want to close it because there's nothing else that they can see that can be done. And maybe they will close it when this gets, you know, when our petition as a last-ditch effort gets turned down for some technicality. Maybe you're going to have hundreds of people closing down the airport physically or legally or financially or whatever. Is that what you want? It's fine with me, be less charter flights. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
I made a motion to recommend.
All those in favor, Mr. Castro?
No.
Mr. Shell says no. Ms. Davis?
No.
Mr. Dykens?
No.
Mr. Metters?
No.
Thank you.